So I'd like to call to order the Maplewood City Council meeting for Tuesday, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. And first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, and to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as justice and justice for all. Thank you. Item number three is roll call, please. And.
You're muted, Karen.
All right.
No problem.
Councilmember Crossley?
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Here.
Mayor Greenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Pardini? Councilmember Phillips?
Yeah.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Mr. Mayor Quorm is present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have a legal statement on our holding the meeting remotely.
Um, yes, Mayor, I would ask that the record reflect that pursuant to section six, ten point zero one five of the Missouri Sunshine Law, members of the city council not physically president count present in council chambers can still participate and vote on all matters when an emergency exists. And I would ask that the minutes reflect that we are still under the COVID nineteen emergency pandemic emergencies.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is the approval of the council agenda.
No, we have to excuse counsel.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped that one.
A motion to excuse counsel person Pardini.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Counselperson Pardini is excused. Item number five now then is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second, are there any changes or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The council agenda is approved. Item number six is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request by Sunning to rezone a portion of existing lot at thirty-one seventeen South Big Ben Boulevard and seventy-five thirty-four Flora Avenue from a PUD district to an SR district. Is there anyone that would like to address the council regarding this particular project?
I do not see any raised hands, Mayor.
Thank you, Sean. In that case, we'll move on to item number seven, which is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request for a conditional use permit to operate a dance studio at seventy-four oh five Manchester. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding this project?
We have one, and I will. No, we have two. It's called the Studio Incorporated. I'm assuming that's probably the owner.
Yeah.
Okay. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Yeah.
Um, it's me and we have, uh, me and the assistant director are both on here. She's probably the one who raised her hand.
Oh, okay.
Separate locations, so.
All right.
Emily Mitchell and myself, Amanda Federer.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about your, your business?
Yeah, um, we are on our, this is our thirtieth year in business. Um, we are new to Maplewood and we're really excited to be here. Actually, I'm a Maplewood resident. Um, but we are just, uh, our classes, they are, our, our most busy class is maybe fourteen to sixteen kids in a class, um, but most of them are on much smaller side. We actually pride ourselves on having a small class size. Um, and, uh, just, you know, um, wanting to have our classes be at their normal, you know, capacity. Um, our particular space, um, the building is adjacent to another building. The whole block is owned by the same landlord, and so there's about a hundred or more parking spaces in the back. So, um, you know, it's no, we aren't just limited to that Manchester parking.
Okay.
But yeah, we're excited to be part of Maplewood and hoping that this goes through, so.
All right. Does anyone on council have any questions for the owner while they're on the call?
I was just gonna ask, is, are the dance lessons just children or are there adult dance lessons? I did, I just thought I'd be curious.
Yeah, we pretty much have classes for all ages. Um, for the most part, I'd say, uh, three years old tends to be our youngest. We've had a couple of those, uh, baby wearing dance classes before and things like that. Um, but we go all the way up through, uh, adults. I have some very, I had for a long time, some very strong adult, uh, class followings. Our adult ballet was traditionally full with a waiting list, um, when we offered it through St. Louis Community College's continuing education program. So we've got all different ages, all different levels and abilities and things like that. It's a lot of fun.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
No problem.
I don't believe that there's anyone else that has their hand raised. So. We will move on then.
I speak?
I'm sorry?
Um, I'm Harley Frankel, I'd like to speak.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm new to this. I thought I pushed the button that said raise hand.
No, you did. You got it. That was my fault.
Oh, okay. Harley Frankel, uh, you must be known as seventy-four twenty-one Manchester. Um, I think this is a great idea. We need more traffic in that end of the Manchester Road to bring people down towards my record store Pizza Hut. And, um, I think it's great. The only thing is that the, the parking, uh, is limited for about the, our tenants, and I just hope they won't interfere with the parking on Margarett. Uh, and, uh, that'll be fine. I think it's great. We need more people.
Okay. Thank you, Harley.
We shouldn't be interrupting any traffic on that side street. Um, all of our tenants will be entering through the back door, anyone coming to our business, um, and not along the street. And being that we're in that center of the building, I, I really would highly doubt that any of our cars would really want to park streetwise. So I don't think we would interfere with their parking. I hope not.
And if it does become a problem, I'm sure we can address that, uh, between everyone. So.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, item number seven, then the public hearing is now closed. Uh, item number eight is public forum, the first of two. Is there anyone with a raised hand here? Okay. Uh, keep in mind that there will be another public forum later in the, uh, meeting. Item number nine are announcements.
Um, I just had a few. There was a couple of things around town for March I was just going to make note of. Um, one of them is that Boardwalk Waffles and Ice Cream launched a brunch service and it'll be on Saturdays and Sundays, so that's something new. And, um, Maplewood owned business Oliver's Coffee and Flowers has opened another store in the Galleria, so I thought that was interesting. That was in March as well. And the library reopened, so patrons can actually come in the doors now.
Okay. Are there any other announcements? Uh, item number ten is the approval of the March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one city council meeting minutes in the closed session minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second, are there any modifications? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes have been approved. Item number eleven is the Parks and Recreation Commission report. We have a representative of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Yeah, we have Jonathan Taylor. Hold on one sec.
Okay.
Jonathan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Great.
Great, go ahead.
Okay. Um, oh, I don't seem to have a video. I'll just talk then. Okay. Um, evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Jonathan Taylor. I have been a member of the commission since two thousand and eighteen, and I was elected as the new chair last month. I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity to report on our parks. Uh, the Maplewood Parks and Recreation Commission is an advisory body composed of nine volunteer Maplewood residents, and we meet monthly and advise the city council and the Assistant Public Works Director regarding the management and improvement of city parks. So just a little bit about what we do. Each park board member is assigned one park to inspect at least monthly. We report findings during the monthly meeting or directly to the Assistant Public Works Director if something requires immediate attention. Our parks are usually in excellent condition and the Public Works Department is highly attentive and diligent. The board also gathers annually in May to tour the parks as a group and to discuss the needs of each park. It is during this tour and the follow-up meeting that the board creates a list of possible improvements. One recent result of a prior tour will be the addition of new trees around the playground at Deer Creek Park. Our two thousand and twenty tour was canceled, but we hope to resume them soon. Uh, we also conduct minor oversight, you know, to date with the status of major projects in our parks, such as the construction of the new skate park and splash pad and the recent reconstruction of the public tennis courts. Our goal is to help ensure that improvements to the parks reflect the needs of the community. So what do we have planned for this year? There will be several new and improved amenities in two thousand and twenty-one. First, the reconstruction of the tennis courts is approximately seventy-five percent complete. The new courts will also be striped, the new courts will also be striped for pickleball, and they will continue to operate on a first come, first served basis. Now, the, the current playground surface at Ron Herbert Memorial Park will be replaced with a pour-in-place rubber surface similar to the one at Central Park and other parks in the area. The current tile system has presented maintenance problems over the years. Construction will occur during late spring or early summer, depending on the weather conditions. Tree plantings are being planned for the north and south sides of the playground at Deer Creek Park. The current plan is to try to install twenty-foot trees in an effort to create more shaded areas for parents and other patrons who are attending children on the playground. Also, the new splash pad is opening this summer. The board and city staff are eager to complete this project at our already stellar aquatic center. And lastly, the board is exploring options to improve public awareness of our beautiful parks and recreation facilities and amenities. This outreach will possibly involve an increased social media presence via existing channels. We believe that certain parks are underused in the community, and more people would use them if they were simply made aware. For example, many people, including new board members, are often surprised to learn that the tennis courts are public. They are not part of the high school campus. And as people increase, certainly obtain information through social media channels, it makes sense to use Maplewood's online presence to promote our parks, which are a major asset. We do have a few recommendations. First, the board encourages the city to develop a master parks plan. Master plans have been created previously for individual parks. However, a master plan for all parks would facilitate long-term budgeting, and it would increase the city's ability to obtain grant funding, as many granting agencies require a master plan. Second, the board encourages the city council to include the parks in its discussion of equity in the community and to ensure that equity, inclusion, and accessibility are factors in the design of future park amenities. Third, the board requests that the council provide for a city representative to attend at least one conference or convention per year when such in-person activities resume. Attendance at prior conventions has resulted, has resulted in the purchase of new equipment at a significant discount, and attendees are able to discover new amenities and trends in parks design. Fourth, various sections of city code and the city's website mention a superintendent of parks and recreation. However, no such position exists. The board suggests that the next city manager work to create a position within the Public Works Department for a full-time park superintendent. In conclusion, the board would like to congratulate John Meyer on his pending retirement and thank him for his forty-three years of service to the city as our street superintendent. Tiffany Hyde, the Assistant Public Works Director, has been a valuable partner, and we owe her our thanks for working as our contact point with the city. In addition, we'd like to thank the city council for writing the process for the dog park discipline hearings. And lastly, we appreciate the recent, the recent work that the council has undertaken with Maplegood to regulate the use of food pantries. We look forward to the coming year as we continue to help improve our city parks. Thank you. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Yeah. Go ahead. Do you have, um, what you just read to us, uh, digital?
Yes.
Can you, uh, send that to the council or send that to, uh, Anthony so he can forward it to us?
Yes, would like we do that right now or just later?
Yeah, just at some point, just so we have, so I have.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
I take okay notes, not great notes. That's all I have. Thank you.
And I just wanted to thank, uh, Jonathan and the rest of the board for, uh, their impressive work and, uh, their concern for the community and, uh, and all the recommendations that they're making that, uh, we will take under consideration. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from, uh, from council? Okay. Well, uh, that was pretty thorough, so we can, uh, I think we can move on here. Item number twelve is a resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, honoring and commending Stephen Cruz on the occasion of his retirement after twelve years of service with the city of Maplewood as its chief of police. I would like to read the resolution. Whereas Steve Cruz is retiring after completing forty-five years of police service of which his final twelve years were as the Maplewood Chief of Police. And whereas Steve began his career as a police officer with Baldwin Missouri Police Department, after two years he moved to Florissant Missouri Police Department, where he spent eighteen years before retiring as a captain to become the Chief of Police in Truesberry, Missouri. And whereas Steve then returned to Florissant to serve as Chief of Police and also served in this capacity for Bowling Green, Missouri, before becoming the Chief of Police for the city of Maplewood. And whereas during Steve's tenure as Chief of Police, the department obtained international accreditation through the Commission of Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. And whereas Steve created a, a very diverse workforce and subs- and substantially increased the city's participation in the Neighborhood Watch Program, Business Watch Program, St. Louis Area Night Out Against Crime, and instituted various other community policing measures. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri as follows. The mayor and city council on behalf of all of our citizens do hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Stephen Cruz for his distinguished services to the community and commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities to the city for the past twelve years. And be it further resolved that the mayor and city council extend to him our best wishes for his continued success. So, uh, is Steve on there? I don't see him, but thank you for your service. You've done a great job, and, uh, hopefully, uh, you and your family will stay healthy. Uh, item number, oh, uh, we need a roll call vote to pass the resolution.
Well, I didn't make the motion yet, so I will make the motion.
Seconded.
Uh, we, we have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor, uh, roll call vote, please, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah.
Resolution twenty-one dash nine is approved.
Thank you. Item number thirteen is a resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, honoring and commending John Meyer on the occasion of his retirement after forty-two years of service with the Maplewood Public Works Department.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second. At this point, I would like to read the resolution. Whereas John Meyer Meyer was hired by the Public Works Department for the city of Maplewood on June sixth, nineteen seventy-eight, whereas John has served the city for forty-two years in an outstanding manner. And whereas John's employment, during John's employment, he has displayed dedication to getting the job done in an outstanding manner. And whereas John has worked constantly for the betterment of the Public Works Department and the city of Maplewood. And whereas John has spent many of his years as superintendent of the Public Works Department. And whereas John has rendered service to this community, which deserves special recognition. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri as follows. The mayor and city council honor and commend John Meyer on the occasion of his retirement after forty-two years of service with the Maplewood Public Works Department. Thank you, John. I don't believe that he's on the call, but, uh, that's one thing that I miss is not being able to present these resolutions in person. Item number fourteen.
Roll call.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash ten is approved.
Thank you. Item number fourteen is a resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to accept the bid from ReVise in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred dollars for the redesign, development, and implementation of a new website and to host it for one year and approving an additional eleven thousand dollars, eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars for three additional years of website hosting services.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Are there questions regarding the, uh, this, uh, company?
Yeah, I'm.
Laura.
Yeah, honestly, that.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, Sean. I'm, I think, Laura, if you could just sum up for me, um, what parts of the, like, your proposal that you're excited about and why you think they're the best candidate? I think that'd be helpful, just for more context.
Sure. So we demos, we did demos with three different, uh, website companies. And with ReVise, I think for us, if they don't offer cookie cutter website designs, it's purely, um, customized, which for us, we found very intriguing, uh, because there are so many parts to, during our research, there are so many parts to other websites that, that we liked that we're able to incorporate as we build our own. And, um, also the ease of creating, of making changes to the website. Right now, it's a little cumbersome, and the way that they have their, the backend user, it's just much more friendly as far as having somebody that might not be as well-versed in, uh, website updates to be able to come in and make changes easily. Tiffany Hyde sat through the demonstrations with, with me, and she will actually be a backup to help with website updates. And she felt extremely comfortable during the demonstration that she could create a page right then and there. It's, uh, everything's on one page. You're not going back and forth, and you don't have multiple browsers open trying to make simple changes. And, you know, security was a big part of this as well. When I called on the different references, that was one thing that the majority of them highlighted. And, you know, the zero downtime for, in some cases, which, um, which is extremely important, obviously, for us, since this is the main, you know, mode of communication with our, with our residents. Um, and then on the front end, as a user, we were on quite a few of these websites just as a front-end user, and it was just so much easier to navigate. The, the designs are clean, uh, easy to read, easy to find things. They, they'll help you with organizing, uh, the different categories. So, um, this was hands down our first choice.
Awesome. Thank you.
Did you have questions or comments?
I have a quick question, Laura. Does the, uh, does the price include support for the entire time?
Yes. So for the first year, that fifteen thousand, seven hundred dollars, thirty-nine of, thirty-nine hundred of that is hosting, maintenance, and support. The remainder is the actual design and, um, migrating information from our current website to the new website. So when you look at year two, three, and four, that thirty-nine hundred dollars is hosting, maintenance, and customer support.
Okay, good, good.
And, and that was my question. So it looks like right now we're paying fourteen thousand, five hundred a year, every year. Is that correct? And this, so this will be substantially cheaper?
Correct.
Awesome.
And I'm assuming that the, uh, the website will be adaptable to all formats, including iOS and Android and, uh, for mobile devices also?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions regarding the website?
Not a question, just a comment. Thank you, Laura, for all your hard work. I know there was a lot of work that went into creating the RFP, so thank you for everything.
Agreed. Thank you.
If there aren't any other comments, uh, we need a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-one dash eleven is approved.
Thank you. Uh, item number fifteen is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending chapter thirty-four offenses.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any comment?
Yes, I have a quick, um, I have two comments. First, I'd like to thank the city attorney's office for their hard work on, uh, this ordinance. Uh, a lot of research put into this, and I'm really grateful for the time they've spent, um, on the memo and the background that they did. Um, secondly, Councilmember Wood had a question for me about this on, uh, Friday about its implementation and how that would be communicated to our police department. I spoke with Anthony on Friday, and, um, anytime a change like this is made, it's communicated, uh, broadly to that department that, that it applies to. So in this instance, the police department, uh, via email. And then this is something that would also be discussed at roll calls. And so this is something that would be discussed in person as well. But I wanted to make sure that I got that information back to Councilmember Wood, and those are my only comments.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Um, Jackie, is the chief gonna have to create a general order for this?
Um, that's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Just curious.
I don't know off the top of my head.
If we get an answer before the third and final vote, that'd be helpful.
Oh, sure.
I just also wanted to thank you for, I feel like you really understood what we were trying to do, and you made some changes to reflect that, which I really appreciated. So thank you for that.
Sure. You're welcome.
If there are no other, uh, comments, we need a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, second reading, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending chapter thirty-four offenses.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, the item will move on to its, uh, third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number sixteen is Bill sixty-one sixty-one in ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing a minor subdivision plant of thirty-one seventeen South Big Ben Boulevard, also known as thirty-five, uh, seventy-five thirty-four Flora.
Motion to approve?
We skipped the item.
We skipped sixteen, right? Is that correct?
Yes, we did. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let me go back, please. Bill sixty-one sixty in ordinance to the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, to rezone a portion of thirty-one seventeen South Big Ben Boulevard, also known as thirty-five, uh, seventy-five thirty-four Flora from Plan Unit Development District to SR Single Family Residential District.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any, are, are there any comments? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty-nine fifty-five is approved.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item seventeen, which is Bill sixty-one sixty-one in ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing a minor subdivision plant of thirty-one seventeen South Big Ben Boulevard, also known as seventy-five thirty-four Flora Avenue.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty-nine fifty-six is approved.
Thank you. Item number eighteen is Bill sixty-one sixty-two in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to Amanda Fedora of the Studio Incorporated to operate a dance studio at seventy-four oh five Manchester Road.
Motion to table for the reading of the findings of fact?
Second.
We have the motion, a second.
The voice vote.
We need a, uh, voice vote here. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The, as far as the, Jackie is the next item, the reading of the findings effect?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, the mayor and city council make the following findings effect for the petition for a conditional use permit for a seventy-four oh five Manchester Road. A, the proposed use complies with all applicable provisions of the zoning code. B, the proposed use will contribute to and promote the community welfare and convenience. C, the proposed use will not cause substantial inju- injury to the value of the neighboring properties. D, the proposed use does comply with the overall neighborhood development plan and existing zoning provisions. E, the proposed use will provide, if applicable, off-street parking and loading areas in accordance with the standards of the zoning code. F, the proposed use will not substantially increase traffic hazards. G, the proposed use will not substantially increase fire hazards. H, the proposed use will not overtax public utilities. And I, the proposed use will not place an undue burden on municipal services.
Motion to approve the findings of fact?
Second.
There's motion, a second.
Roll call, we need.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
And Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion to bring the bill back on the table?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to approve the bill?
We need a second.
Second.
Okay. Uh, is there any discussion? In that case, uh, we need a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah.
Ordinance number fifty-nine fifty-seven is approved.
Uh, item number nineteen is old business equity discussion. Who would like to start the discussion?
So I know that Anthony sent us the RFP. Um, I haven't had a chance. Was it, sorry, Jenny, I saw you shaking your head.
No, I was agreeing. I also haven't had a chance to look at it. Sorry.
Haven't had a chance. No, you're good. I, I wanted to make sure I was recalling that correctly and that in the past hour I hadn't totally misremembered. Okay. Um, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I was wondering if it would be helpful for this group if we set, um, a deadline to review it and get comments back to Anthony? Um, or how we wanted to handle incorporating any comments that we may have. Um, it looks like, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna ask, um, he said something about putting it on the work session for next week. Would that work for everybody? And would that be enough time to look it over and have any comments before the work session or whatever? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, I, if we could,
Yes.
before the work session next week, um, review it and maybe communicate to Anthony any edits we have that we could then discuss as a group in advance of that meeting. I think that's, I think that's perfect. Thank you. That was all I had is I just wanted to set a, a timeframe on that.
Okay. Is there, uh, so, to summarize, we're going to, uh, review and, provide edits or comments to Anthony prior to the work session, then we'll discuss it at the work session. And are there any other issues regarding the equity discussion here? Okay, in that case, uh, item number twenty is discussion of the concert series Council Booth. Who would like to start that?
I can start it. I had asked for this to put, and I just wanted to, like, bring it back into our discussion in case there were any sort of items we needed any lead time on. I know, I didn't know if we needed any sort of materials or banner or whatever. We never really got that far in our discussion about what that would be. So I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I know even though time is weird, it does still move somewhat quickly and May will be here before we know it. So, um, I didn't know if anyone had thoughts on, or if there's an existing sort of Maplewood banner we could put on a table or something.
Marty, do we have anything like that, that we could use?
No, the only banners we have are the street banners.
Are the street ones? Okay. I mean, if we're gonna be doing this ongoing and at events, it may be worth it if it's not too cost prohibitive to, like, get something that would identify us.
I'm thinking, banner are you talking about?
I mean, I don't think it has to be real huge.
I would think about six feet wide to fit on a, you know, a, a folding table. You know, by about two feet tall.
Yeah, and that would not be expensive.
Okay. Um, the other thing I didn't know if we wanted to start thinking about, there had been mention of, like, having materials available. So if people had particular things like utility, like, there had been mention of utility resources or, um, having a war, also having a ward map there, uh, I didn't know if, you know, people wanted to think about that, and maybe we could, uh, you know, I could create a Google Doc and people could just sort of list on there what types of things they wanted, to have available to residents, um, if we wanted to, so that we can get, start getting that ready.
I think a Google Doc would be awesome.
Okay.
Just one comment.
Um.
What? I can't hear you very well.
Just one comment. The, the word map that you have out right now will most likely change before the next election based on when the census data comes out.
Oh, okay.
Well, yeah, true.
That's good. Okay.
It may, and it's usually pretty minuscule change, if anything, but it, it can, it can change from time to time.
Okay.
All right. So as far as the council booth, uh, everyone needs to think about what type of materials and resources we need to, provide to, uh, assist us in our conversation with the, with our residents.
I could also, sorry, I can also add to that, like, the dates, and then people, if they have particular ones that they wanna sign up for.
Yeah.
Um, and I guess they had a question, uh, for you, uh, Jackie, is, like, can, I mean, if we're not talking to each other, can four of us be there, or does it still have to be three?
At which event, Councilmember?
So we were gonna set up, like, a, a booth at, at events that, like, the chamber puts on us to, like, talk to residents, to be there, to talk to them.
Yeah, no, that's not, that's not, unless you're conducting council business, you're, that's more of like a listening session or that, you know, and it would not be required that you all be there.
But we could have a majority there. You, um, four, we could have four council people.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, other ideas with regards to the council booth?
Finally, give you the, the banner that we have.
I'm, uh,
Didn't hear that. What was that?
Verbiage, it's the one on the banner.
Oh, um, verbiage for the banner.
Yeah, um.
City of Maplewood Council?
I think that would be enough. I was thinking the same thing.
With our, with our emblem on it? I mean, I don't think it has to be too fancy.
Yeah, I agree.
Or, uh, City of Maplewood Council members, you know, or something. Adam, I don't, I don't know if we need anymore. What do you think, Barry?
I think a picture of the peanuts booth, you know, and charging five cents for advice, uh, would, would be helpful, but, uh, yeah, I think that would be sufficient, like you discussed. And, uh, yeah, hopefully we don't have to send it to Design and Review Board. I don't know. So, uh, uh, we, I think we have plenty of time to determine that if anyone has any ideas or wants to submit, or we could have a, uh, a contest with the kids to, uh, design our banner. So, we, we don't have to decide that now, but, uh,
I'll put that on the Google Doc, too, and everyone can share their thought. We'll just put it all on there. Everyone can share.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, uh, that would make a lot of sense. So, uh, if there's no more discussion about the booth, we'll move on to item twenty-one, which is council communication. Do we have any, uh, council members that want to, uh, speak?
Um, just briefly, I was at the Coffee Crawl this weekend, and I neglected to say this when Laura was still on, but it was a really well-done event. Um, and I just wanted to, um, share my gratitude for their effort on that event.
Yeah, at this point, we do have some guidelines from St. Louis County. I don't know how often they, they change, but, uh, you know, with regards to meeting as groups and holding, uh, uh, community events like this. So it really helps that the county has produced those, those guidelines. And, uh, so we can start planning, uh, hopefully some of the events moving forward.
You know, I, I do have one, um, kind of, uh, question or comment. Is there any indication of when we might be able to hold our meetings in person at City Hall again? Or is that too soon to know? I'm just sort of bored out there to see.
Too soon, Karen, too soon.
Well, I'm not ready yet, but.
I am not fully vaccinated yet, so I'm.
Not either. I've got one more to go.
And I think that's a valid point that, you know, uh, it would be nice if all of us were vaccinated, yeah, you know, in order to meet in person. Or at least two, I think, believe, two weeks after. I got my second shot this week. So two weeks after that, I feel a lot more comfortable about getting together with everyone.
I'd like to add, uh, two quick things to that. One, um, as helpful as it is for all of us to be vaccinated, I think it would be hard and potentially uncomfortable for our constituents to participate, especially if they are tier-eligible and have not yet received a vaccine and have been waiting, which I can understand is a really frustrating process. But secondly, I've been really impressed with the level of engagement we've been getting virtually. And, um, I think however we move forward, we should look to include that. I think providing a virtual way for folks to engage has been really phenomenal, especially for our working families. And, you know, the recordings are also very useful, but, um, the participation we've seen during this incredibly challenging time has grown, which is not, you know, what I would have assumed to, what was going to happen. And so I think anyway, whatever we do next, creating some way and sustaining some way for folks to continue engaging virtually, I would ask that we prioritize that.
I, I agree with Councilmember Crossley that we need to figure out a way, and, you know, now's the time to start thinking about it, how we can continue to, um, broadcast via Zoom or however we do that, even when we do go, virtual. We all know the, um, the limitations of, of what we were doing prior to Zoom. The, the sound quality wasn't great. Um, that just, um, doesn't really measure up to what we have right now. So, um, so I think this is, uh, you know, we, we should start thinking about how we're gonna accomplish that for the future.
Yeah, we were broadcasting, but we really didn't have an, uh, a viable option for getting feedback from, uh, from the public.
Well, we weren't live broadcasting. We were reporting it and then posting it later. We had asked to live broadcast if we were that, we're given that option. So the, the difference is, I know the school board live broadcasts theirs, but it's on YouTube, so you can't interact. So if there is a way to do it where people can still participate in public comment, um, you know, the public forum, while we're in person and they're there, that would be great.
Yeah, there's, we, we can. We use, our company uses Zoom in a lot of different ways. We have
Okay.
and all kinds of stuff. So, I'll kind of start looking at that to make sure that we can continue, uh, to do this, whether we all meet in person uh, in the council chambers or if we continue like this. So, um, yeah, there's lots of options out there, so.
Thank you.
Any other council communication? Okay, uh, item number twenty-two is the mayor's report. I talked with Joan Kelly Horn today over at St. Louis County. Uh, she's taken on a different, uh, role over there, but, uh, part of our discussion is if anyone out there knows any seniors that have not registered for vaccination or haven't been vaccinated, uh, please let us know. I believe that she had recommended that, we go through Oasis, uh, in order to get everyone registered so that they don't necessarily have to have computer access. And, uh, they will help them through the process, but we need to make sure that all of our seniors have, you know, accessibility to the vaccine, and I don't know if that's the case. So anyone that knows anyone that might not, uh, be registered or vaccinated at this point, at this point, anyone over sixty-five should be close to being, you know, complete with their, uh, their, uh, sequence. So, uh, uh, if they could, I guess the easiest thing to do is they can call it into, uh, City Hall, or, go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, so the phone number folks can call to get support for, um, if you're sixty-five and older and don't have internet access, if you need support getting, uh, registered through St. Louis County Department of Public Health is three one four six one five two six six zero. That's three one four six one five two six six zero. And if you're sixty-five and older, uh, Department of Public Health staff will connect you to someone either in Oasis or the County Older Residents Program. If you're under sixty-five and don't have access to the internet, you too can still call that number. Um, and a Department of Public Health staff member will, um, assist you. Um, whenever I talk about this, though, uh, in community engagement, I do ask folks to keep in mind that if you have access to the internet and can use it, please do so, so that we can leave that, uh, resource available to folks who really, really need it. Um, registering that way does not jump the line. It doesn't get you in quicker or slower. It just puts you into the process at a different access point. And that was one of the misconceptions that we were, uh, fighting when we first launched that. Um, so again, in case anybody didn't get that, that phone number is three one four six one five two six six zero.
Thank you, Sarah. And that's, that's all for the mayor's report. Item number twenty-three is the city attorney's report.
I don't have anything, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, item number twenty-four is the city manager's report. Uh, item number twenty-five then is the second of, uh, two public forums. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council at this point?
I use the raise your hand function if you do. And, uh, Mayor, I do not see anybody with their hand up.
Okay, and I do not believe that we need to hold a closed session. Uh, Marty, is that correct? Uh, then I will, at this point, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Everyone, continue to stay safe and distant. And, uh, uh, we'll gather next week for the, is it next, yeah, next week for the work session then.
Don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.